Okay, all right. So now to start things off, I'm going to see if I can have to find where to move the... no, that's not it. Okay. Well, I'm having a little technical difficulty at my end. So it looks like I'm going to remain the host for the time being. Okay, oh, here we go. Okay, it looks like because of a technical problem on my end, I'm going to have to remain the host for now. So sorry about that. I'll try and get that sorted out before the next time we do this. Okay. All right. Oh, okay, I found it. Okay, I found it. There we go. There we go. Now we're all set. All right. So good evening. I'm going to start this evening with a short prayer from the Lojong practice text. Going to recite the four-line refuge prayer, taking refuge in the Buddha, his teachings, and the Sangha. And we'll begin with that. Until I reach enlightenment, I take refuge in all the Buddhas and in the Dharma and the Sangha. By the merit of accomplishing the six perfections, may I achieve Buddhahood for the benefit of all sentient beings. Until I reach enlightenment, I take refuge in all the Buddhas and in the Dharma and the Sangha. By the merit of accomplishing the six perfections, may I achieve Buddhahood for the benefit of all sentient beings. Until I reach enlightenment, I take refuge in all the Buddhas and in the Dharma and the Sangha. By the merit of accomplishing the six perfections, may I achieve Buddhahood for the benefit of all sentient beings. I'm going to walk through the the basic Lojong practice. And then, once we get the guru yoga completed, then we'll begin the class. At the beginning of every period of meditation, imagine your root guru sitting on a lotus and moon seat above your head. The guru's body is radiant and their face is smiling and happy as they regard all beings with non-referential compassion. In them, all the root and lineage gurus are present. With intense faith and devotion, recite this prayer. I pray for your blessing, my guru, great and completely worthy spiritual friend. I pray that you will cause love, compassion, and bodhicitta to arise in my mind. I pray for your blessing, my guru, great and completely worthy spiritual friend. I pray that you will cause love, compassion, and bodhicitta to arise in my mind. I pray for your blessing, my guru, great and completely worthy spiritual friend. I pray that you will cause love, compassion, and bodhicitta to arise in my mind. Then imagine that your guru descends through the aperture of Brahma at the top of your head and sits in your heart in a pavilion of light. This exercise in respect and devotion is known as guru yoga, and it is important to begin every period of meditation in this way. Okay, thank you. I hope that everyone has had a good week and that you've enjoyed working on your Lojong practice. And I hope that folks are able to do some of the Lojong practice every day and that you're doing some of the tong len, sending and receiving practice also. So in any case, I have a few notes that I'd like to start with. Let's see here. It says, basically, as we look at our lives, we experience the world in a very rich way, but we sometimes misunderstand its nature. The Buddha, in his teachings, have said that our mind, our human mind, is limitless. It has, it's not made of matter. It has no color, no shape, no location, no beginning, no end, and is vast and without limit. Some people use the word emptiness to describe the mind, but the word limitless really, I think, covers it better. And so the Buddha says our mind is limitless, but it is not a nothing. It is not a void, and that is because it's luminous. It has the potential for experience, and it also has the potential to know itself. And so because we have not yet experienced our minds in the way that the Buddha taught, we instead misunderstand our limitless mind as a self, and we misunderstand our luminosity as an external world of outer phenomena. And through this dualizing of the world, we then try to conquer our world and ourselves. And we react to many things with self-fixation. You can say there are chain reactions. What we're doing is chain reactions. And in a way, we seek to change that by unifying the dichotomy that we find ourselves in through the practices of love and the practices of wisdom. Those are the two kinds of bodhicitta that are taught in the book that we're studying. The, so the system that is taught by the master Chakawya Yeshe Dorje in his book, The Great Path of Awakening, this particular text, this comes from the 12th century. And it taught us how to, it teaches us how to meditate. And once we learn the basic practices of quiet sitting meditation, then we can also learn the practices of meditation on wisdom and the practices of meditation on compassion. And so that's why the Lojong practice is constructed the way it is, starting with guru yoga and then continuing through quiet sitting meditation and then meditation on the nature of mind, which is called meditating on ultimate bodhicitta, and then practicing love and compassion. Now, if you remember last week, we discussed the second of the seven points of mind training. And in this particular, and in this particular teaching of last week, we talked about reflecting on the emptiness and limitless nature of mind by looking for the mind's color, looking for the mind's shape, looking for its location, looking for its beginning and end. And in not being able to find these things, then we find a way to rest the mind in itself quietly. I remember when I first started teaching this some years ago, I asked Kenpo Karthar Rinpoche, I said, well, what is it that we meditate upon at the very beginning? He said, well, he said, you can encourage people at the very beginning when they're meditating on ultimate bodhicitta, you can encourage them to contemplate the limitless nature of mind, how vast and limitless it is. He says, even if they can't do an analytical meditation on where is the mind's color, where is its shape, what's its location, its beginning or its end? He said, they can contemplate the idea of mind. They can contemplate the idea of the limitless nature of mind and come to an understanding within their own hearts that their mind is truly limitless and as such has an endless ability to accept and an endless ability to give. And I think this helps a lot because the other practice we learned last week was the practice of tong len, sending and receiving. Once we've reflected on the mind as being limitless, then it's very easy for us to imagine that as we breathe out, we give goodness to all sentient beings. And as we breathe in, we remove the suffering of beings. And as it enters us, the suffering meets our pure motivation. It dissolves into nothing and then disappears. And so as a result, I think that being able to reflect on limitlessness at the very beginning is important. So even if we can't do the practice of analytical meditation on the nature of mind, at the very least, we can practice a little bit of the reflection on mind as being limitless and as having the limitless capacity to give and the limitless capacity to accept. So that's a shortcut that Kenpo Rinpoche taught when I was speaking with him about the challenges of teaching ultimate bodhicitta to a general audience. I had a memory last week after our talk last week, I had this memory of Rinpoche and I discussing how difficult this was. And that he said, well, that's all right. Even if they can't perform the ultimate bodhicitta meditation, they can at the very least reflect on the limitless nature of mind and how it has the limitless ability to give and the limitless ability to accept. And he said, and that will help them in their tong len practice. So I don't know how you did it, but you guys helped me dislodge a memory about something that Rinpoche taught a number of years ago. So that's something that you can use as you're practicing. I'm going to take just a quick look here at the questions and see if there's any questions so far. No, I think, yeah, no, I guess that's it for the time being. I hope everybody was able to do some tong len last week, even if it's just a little bit, that little, yeah, I see, yeah, a little bit, little bit. Yeah, because if you can do a little bit of tong len, that's really, really good. And I also want to see if anybody had any luck practicing the three objects, three poisons, three seeds of virtue slogan. I'm willing to take questions from the floor. Did anybody do that? Yeah, I see somebody's holding up their script. Okay, Marilyn, you know how to unmute? You can tell me what your, tell me what your experience with that was.
Oh, it's always good when I do that because it makes me relax and just... If it's a serious, if it's a serious problem, I have to do it over and over again for that particular instance. But if it's not, if it's just, if it's just my mind playing, it goes away after the first time.
I can understand that. Kenpo Rinpoche said that, he said, when you start doing this practice of the three objects, three poisons, three seeds of virtue, that's where you feel a negative mental affliction coming up within you, like you feel irritation, or you feel impatience, or you feel upset. And then you take one step backward from the feeling and observe it. And you can even label it. You know, you can call it anger or sadness or whatever. And then you can plug it into the formula that the, that John Kuen Khatil the Great gives in this book, where he says, he says, "May every bit of every sentient being's negative mental affliction be contained in the negative mental affliction of mine, and may all sentient beings have the seed of virtue of being free of attachment or aversion or whatever. May this mental affliction of mine contain all their disturbing emotions, and until they attain Buddhahood, may they be free of such disturbing emotions." And Marilyn, what you're reporting is something that happens to me a lot is, Kenpo Rinpoche said, if your mental affliction is so powerful, if you have been totally overpowered by it, he said, you won't be able to use the formula on it. It will sort of resist. But he said, that's why it's important to start with the ones that are not quite so strong. And then you can, you can begin to transform those because this is about transforming the emotion. It's not that you make the emotion go away. It's that you take that emotion, which is usually so complicated and full of reactiveness, and it kind of goes on its own. You take that emotion, and instead of running away from it, you stay with it and work with it. And then you exchange that negative storyline in your mind, like, I am bad, or that person is bad. We changed that storyline for the storyline, "I'm a bodhisattva in training, and may my anger contain the anger of all beings. And as a result of me doing this, may I be free of anger, may these people be free of anger." And so we take that emotion, which otherwise would turn into a terrible story that we might ruminate on for days. And we change the story to one in which we are using it, the emotion, to practice an aspiration for goodness from our heart. So...
Yes. If the formula doesn't work, what I usually do is I just, I just look at whatever the emotion is. I just look at it. Eventually, it goes away.
Yeah. Kenpo Rinpoche said, if all else fails, he says, if nothing, he says, if it doesn't lose strength and if it doesn't disappear, he said, what you can do is that you can, you can make an aspiration in your mind that the next time, you'll be able to get hold of it. So it's like that. So hopefully, that's helpful.
Thank you.
Chuja.
I have a question, if I may. I get stuck with just trying to remember that I've got a new skill to use. And I'm wondering if you have any suggestions on how we can keep in our mind that we have a new skill set to use, that we can use when these negative mental afflictions arise, to just try to be mindful of getting that, you know, getting that going, recognizing that I've got a new skill to use with this emotion. Now I don't have to use my old ways anymore. I'm trying to learn something new.
Yeah, I do hear that. And I think that's what most people tell me is the biggest challenge of doing this, of doing this, is starting, saying, telling yourself you have a new skill. And for some people, what they end up doing is they end up reading the, just reading the little script from the book, you know, or whether you've got the, whether you've got the little business card version of it that we give out, or whether you've copied it out of the book, just reading it over like morning and evening when you're doing your practice. Just make an aspiration when you do your practice in the morning, read the script and say, may I be able to capture one of my mental afflictions today and use it to create an aspiration for myself? And then you can also do it in the evening. You can look at it again and read it again. I think that's going to be the next best thing. The other thing that's helped me a lot is that for myself, sometimes when I feel tension in my body, like I feel like I'm tightening up to get angry or I feel tightening up to be afraid, then I will use the feeling in my body and say, okay, it's time to use the script. And I'll try to have it, you know, handy. That was what I did until I got it memorized. And so, once you have the script memorized, it will come more quickly. So I think that those are two things you can do. Anybody else have a question? Or they'd like to talk about their experience with the three objects?
Yeah, Lama Kathy?
Sure.
Yeah. When I, well, you know, plenty of times when I don't remember to do it. So that's in line with what you're talking about. But also, when I do, it hasn't pretty good at getting me out of that mental, you talked about the mental, the story. So the afflictive emotion is, is, at least for me, always backed up by a lot of verbiage in my head, a story.
Yeah, there's like a story, yeah.
Yeah, it's like some BS, you know, that I'm fed up with. Anyway, so when I do the practice, it gets me out of the story. So at the very least, I'm not thinking, I'm not spinning that, I'm not spinning the same old lines because it refocuses you. So, and so generally, so that by itself is always helpful. Now, sometimes, you know, it doesn't always right away clear up. But generally speaking, it's immediately helpful in that respect, if not, at the very least.
I really appreciate that because of the way you say it reminds me of an example. You know, when we are really angry at somebody or we're angry at ourselves or whatever, you know, we're like plugged in into the wall, you know, we're like plugged into the wall. And so the first thing to do is unplug yourself from the wall, okay? So that, so that that current of that story that we're telling ourselves about, you know, like how bad we are or how bad they are or whatever, we have to unplug from that story first. And the minute we unplug from the story, at first, we're like, okay, now what? You know, but then if we have, then if we have the little script to go to, then that helps us to turn whatever we're feeling. Again, we're trying to exercise, exercise our new identity. You know, we're bodhisattvas in training. And, you know, so we're trying to, trying to take on that persona, but it's part of what does it. And it's not that we're making the emotion go away. It's that we're actually seeing it in a different kind of perspective. And I think that's kind of what this is about. We're trying to get, take a different perspective on it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I've got time for one more. Is there one more out there?
Lama Kathy?
Yes.
Hi.
Hey there.
Hi, thank you again for doing these for us. So I like the way you put that unplugged from the wall, and it made me think of, you know, the timelapse more involved with computer hardware. And if something was going horribly, horribly wrong on the server, we'd have to kick the plug out of the outlet, like kick it out.
Yeah, I hear that.
But I got, and I don't know if this may or may not be helpful to anybody, but I have, I have this box of assorted color flashcards that I'm using for another little new hobby of mine, now that we're all locked down. But what I've done over the past week or so is use some of them for, you know, the three, and then, you know, the text on the back. And, you know, I carry these vocabulary things in my pocket, but I have this with them as well now. And sometimes, just physically, because I spin, I launch. I go all in. And for me, sometimes having like a physical artifact or an object, you know, to kind of put in my hand and, you know, kind of remind me what it is I'm doing here. So maybe that's helpful for someone.
Physical reminder, that's really a good thing, you know, because sometimes, you know, I have friends who tell me that they wear a set of beads on their wrist, and sometimes they give the beads a little tug, you know, to help them remember they got to stay grounded. So I like that. And thank you for the, thank you so much for the computer analogy, having to unplug the mainframe. Oh, my gosh, you know. Oh, gosh. Well, thank you for the, for sharing your experiences with the three objects because the three object slogan, if all goes well with our training in bodhicitta training, if all goes well, the three objects slogan will be with us actually for the rest of our lives. And you will find it comes in handy when you feel illness. You feel it will come in handy when you're feeling sad. It will come, and it will be like a new friend. I know when we were children, they told us we couldn't have an imaginary friend. But we can be our own imaginary friend and coach as we try to train ourselves to have, to have a different reaction when something happens. Because remember, part of what's going on here is that the Buddha's teaching that only love dispels hate. Only love dispels hate. So only love dispels these negative mental afflictions. And so by training to do something different with our mental afflictions, by training to do something different, we're trying to increase our capacity to experience love for ourselves. Because what do we wish for when we, when we wish the three objects slogan, when we do that, "May I be free of this negative mental affliction, may all beings be free of this negative..." We're caring for ourselves. We're increasing our capacity to love ourselves, and we're increasing our capacity to love others. Because what stands in the way of our relationships with others is usually what the Buddha called our self-fixation, our selfishness. And if we can somehow find a way to pry open our self-fixation, then we will be able to increase our capacity to feel love for ourselves as well as for others. And that's why we have this training. You might say, well, what's the function of this training? The training is eventually to loosen that egoistic clinging that causes so much of our pain and suffering. And this leads me to what we're going to be talking about tonight, which is the third of the seven points of mind training, which is turning adverse conditions into the path of awakening. Now, those of you who read last week, we, last week, we read pages 10 through 17 and covered point two in its entirety. And today, we're going to try to cover point three. We may not be able to get through it in its entirety, but we'll get most of the way through it. And that's pages 17 through 25. And for those of you who are keeping track, next week, we will cover points four and five together. And that will be, even though it's two points, it's only five pages. Pages 25 through 30 will be covered next week. But this week, we're going to start with page 17. And the, and the first slogan in the, in the section is, when, I better, I better read it out of the book. Otherwise, I'll make a mistake. "When misfortune fills the world and its inhabitants, make adversity the path of awakening." So as Lojong practitioners, I mean, you know, we're considering for the purpose of this book club and the purpose of this six-week period, we're considering ourselves to be Lojong practitioners. So that's our, that's our identity. We're bodhisattvas in training who are trying to practice Lojong. As Lojong practitioners, we're training in compassion, and we're training in wisdom. But if we practice only on our meditation seat, that's not enough time to transform our whole lives. So we only spend a certain number of minutes on our meditation seat every day, and we spend hours and hours and hours in relationship with ourselves and relationship with other people through our everyday lives. And so if we only have our Lojong practice, our mind training practice on our cushion, it's not enough. We need to expand the, our mind training practice to fill all corners of our life. Now, next week, when we talk about point four, we're going to talk about how to fill your whole day from the moment you wake up in the morning until the moment you go to sleep at night. We're going to tell you how to fill your whole day with Lojong. But that's next week. This week, I think it's really interesting that Chakawya Yeshe Dorje, the writer, the author of the seven-point mind training, that what does he do instead of telling you like, here's how you fill your whole day. When you wake up in the morning, do this. And when you go to sleep at night, do this. He doesn't do that. He goes straight for the heart of the matter. And he says, "I know you all feel that you are the victims of misfortune. So let's talk about misfortune first." So he's going to talk about the stuff that's hardest first. He's going to go after the thing that's the hardest, which is what do you do when things go wrong? Now, I don't know about you, but for me, when stuff goes wrong, I'm not at my best. I am not at my best. I don't have my little halo. I am not, you know, I'm not an angel. I'm not a bodhisattva in training. In fact, I want to kind of hide, you know, because I am not always at my best when bad things happen. There are two things, there are two go-to emotions that I tend to grab for. Now, maybe you do, maybe you don't. But for me, the big two are anger and blame. I, when I, when things go wrong, if I can't take the blame, I'll try to give it to somebody else. Or I'll try to give myself too much blame and not, and just, you know, weigh myself down with a rock. So blame can be a really negative thing to do. And then anger, which really feeds blame, that's another negative thing to do. So what does Chakawya Yeshe Dorje do? He structures this section, this third point of mind training with alternatives to those two things. He says, "I know you love blame. I know you love anger. I know you love blame. But let me tell you, they're not good for you, and here are things you can do instead." So, but before I get started, oh, I forgot. I wanted to quote a poem for you. So I'm putting it in chat right now, if I can. Let's see if it works. It is not going to work. What a shame. Oh, there it is. I did it twice, okay? You're going to get this twice, sorry. I'm sharing with you a quotation that was given to me in the basement of the Columbus KTC a number of years ago by Rochelle Peters. of the Columbus KTC a number of years ago by Rochelle Peters. And if you see her on the street, thank her for me. Rochelle had written down this little verse that came from the great master, Khenpo Soltrong Jamso. It's just four lines, and I apologize, um, I, I did a techie problem. I, I put it in twice. It's a, it's an aspiration. He says, "May all of our bad circumstances arise as friends on the path. May all bad circumstances actually bring us benefit. May we realize emptiness, the complete freedom from elaborations. And as a result of fulfilling these aspirations, may we bring great benefit to all sentient beings." Um, I, I can't, I can't thank Rochelle enough for this verse. Because this verse, um, it's, again, it's life-affirming and life-changing. Because what we're doing by reciting this verse is that we're, uh, saying, you know, blame isn't all it's cracked up to be, and anger isn't all it's cracked up to be. Maybe there's another way. And so what he encourages us to do in this verse is he encourages us to have a different viewpoint, to take a different viewpoint, and aspire that every bad thing that happens to us becomes a friend in that it moves us farther along the path. Does that make sense? And sometimes when things are bad, we can't say this verse, but sometimes we can. And so I'm encouraging everybody to add this verse to your daily practice. Well, for the next week or two, while we're doing point three, because, uh, it's really going to help you. If you recite it every day and every day, once a day, eventually you'll have it memorized. And then when negative things happen, it might be something that you can reach for. "May all our bad circumstances arise as friends along the path. May all bad circumstances actually bring us benefit." Because we can't see into the future. We can't see into the future time, what's going to, what this negative circumstance is going to bring us. And so may it bring us benefit, and then may we realize emptiness, which is the complete freedom from all stories and elaborations. And as a result of this, uh, may we bring great benefit to sentient beings. So, uh, so essentially, what he's asking us to do is we're being invited to see things differently. We're being invited to see adversity or misfortune differently and may, and make the aspiration that our misfortunes arise as friends. In other words, we have to change our relationship to misfortune. So when the world goes wrong, we tend to take it personally. I, again, I don't know about you, but I tend to take it personally when things go wrong. And then I react. And then my selfishness, uh, brings about a, a great deal of suffering. I either take too much blame or not enough. And then I, and then I have difficulty working with other people who try to make me responsible for something that I'm actually responsible for. So, uh, this is something, uh, that, that I want to bring your attention to. Lojong gives us the techniques to slow things down. So we're not quite as reactive, to slow things down and give us a chance to see things differently. An example of this is the first slogan, uh, the second slogan in this section. Uh, the, the slogan says, "Drive all blame into one." And basically what he's saying here is, um, "Don't do what you usually do." He's giving us a piece of fatherly advice. He's saying, "Don't do what you usually do," which is blame. When something goes wrong, don't just run and blame something. And he says, um, he said, "Rather, you should think like this. This mind grasps at a self where there is no self. From time without beginning until now, it has, in following its own whims and samsara, perpetrated various non-virtuous actions. All the sufferings I now experience are the results of those actions. No one else is to blame. This ego-cherishing attitude is to blame. I shall do whatever I can to subdue it." And now this is something I have to draw your attention to. Um, the people who wrote the Lojong books all those centuries ago, they have a few things they like to use. They like to use, uh, in their literary writing, they like to use exaggeration, and they like to use irony. And they also like to do this like little thing that I think is so interesting. They like to create a fictional character called "your ego fixation." And then they stand aside from it and scold it. "Oh, you ego fixation, you've never helped me. You've only done me wrong. I don't want to be with you anymore. You're not my friend." And, uh, a lot of people who read this, they get, they get a little bit concerned about it because they don't want people to blame themselves. They say, "You sound like you're blaming the victim when you say 'drive all blame into one.'" And the one that we have to drive it into is ego fixation, our tendency to act selfishly in situations. And, um, and so even if we find that uncomfortable, what we might think about is if, even if all the further we can get with this is to try to restrain ourselves when we try to blame somebody for, for something. Or if we try to take too much blame for something. Um, i- if we can restrain ourselves, that would be great. But if we can, I, you know, it takes, it takes a while to really kind of get the hang of this, "Oh, you ego clinging, you're not me. You're my bad habits. Oh, you bad habits, you know, you're not my friend." And so on. Uh, in fact, a friend of mine told me recently that, uh, that one of her, um, her friends who works as a counselor, uh, uh, said that they, that, uh, that she said that she tends, she scolds her old bad habits, but she tries to reassure them at the same time. She says, "Oh, you bad habit, how kind you are to try to come back to help me. You're trying to protect me, but you know what? I'm older now and I'm wiser now, and I no longer need you, old bad habit. I, I can take care of myself now. You've done a great job. You can go now." So, I mean, what's, i- isn't that really it, right? Because some of our old bad habits developed when we didn't know better. If we didn't know how to take care of ourselves when bad circumstances happened to us, we just, we developed these old bad habits in order to help us cope. But now that we're older, we, these bad habits aren't really helping us anymore. And I love the way she said it. She said, "Thank you for trying to protect me." You know, "Thank you for trying to protect me, but, uh, I'm, I got it from here." So regardless of how you address yourself, you know, i- i- or how you look at it, the, the function of this slogan is to tell you not to reach instantly for blame. I do need to say one more thing about self-blame because, I personally struggled with this in my life, and I know lots of other people do too. And, um, somebody once asked Khenpo Karthar Rinpoche in a question and answer session, "Rinpoche, what do you think is the root of all of this self-blame and shame and, and all of this that people feel these days?" You know, where people just, they feel so much shame and so much guilt. It's like excessive amounts of shame and guilt. And Rinpoche's answer was something, i- it wasn't exactly like this, but he said, "A certain amount of shame is okay, a small amount." He said, "Because we need to feel, um, that we don't want to repeat the action in the future. This bad thing that we did, we don't want to repeat it. We can think." He said, "But you have to take the right amount of blame." He says, "If you take, hmm, he said, "You have to only take your share of blame for something that happened. You can't take the other person's share of blame." He said, "If you take more than your share of the blame, that's excessive, and it's going to cause you, uh, it's going to cause you, uh, difficulty." He said, "Don't take more than your share. Take only your share." And at first, I wasn't exactly sure what my share was. I didn't know how to define that. But after a while, I began to see what was, what was outsized, what was wrong-sized about what I was doing. I was actually taking other people's responsibility, and that's not right. I only need to take mine. And so it takes a while to learn this, and there's going to be a lot of trial and error. But, uh, I just thought I would share that. So, uh, does anybody have questions about the, uh, the first two slogans about? Uh, the first one, it says, "When misfortune fills the world." Jangkhen Kontrul says, "You must change the circumstances in which you find yourself." And the reason he says "must" is that if we don't change our circumstances, then we might fall into these bad habits of, of blame and anger. You know, if we are not trying to work with our mental afflictions, we're, we end up often giving in to our bad habits of reaction. And those get stronger as we practice them. So what we have to do is we have to first hold back and not practice the things we usually do, and then gradually put, do things that we should do. Does this make sense? Um, any, any questions or anything, um, about this, this first part?
I have another question, Lama, if I may.
Sure.
Um, regarding driving all blame into one, it almost seems as if what we are doing here is we're taking the judgment away or we're muting that judgment.
Yeah.
And I guess if you take judgment out of blame, what are you left with?
Yeah. Well, right. I think, I think what you have to understand is also the excessive nature. Here's the thing, everything has to be done in moderation. You know, everything has to be done in moderation. Yes, according to my ethics, let's say I did something wrong. According to my ethics, that was wrong. And I have to, uh, and I have to confess that and to make amends for that, that I did wrong. So that amount of judgment is needed. But what's not needed is the excessive amount of judgment that won't let it go and bring it back again and again and again. You see what I'm saying? Yeah, because, um, I use the example of an invisible stick. People take an invisible stick and hit themselves on the head with it over and over again when they've already actually dealt with it once. But they, it, they just keep, it just keeps coming back. And so for that, that's where, that's where they have to say, "Okay, we've actually talked about this." You know, "Fault of mind that I'm trying to work with. We've actually talked about this and, and, and it's fine. Old bad habit, you're trying to protect me. You're trying to keep me from doing bad things. Old bad habit, I really appreciate it, but I'm fine now. You know, I can, I can take it from here." Does that make sense? Yeah. So we have to have a little bit of judgment because that's why the Buddha gave us the list of the 10 skillful actions and the 10 unskillful actions. So that we would have an ethical framework to judge our own behavior by, right? So we do have to have that much judgment. But the problem is, is when we use that judgment as a way of holding ourselves, of giving ourselves too much, you know, shame so that we can't function. Does that make sense? Okay. Yeah, it's, it's, it's an aspiration. It's an aspiration. We're aspiring to have our judgment the right size. Do you remember when we're kids on the playground and there would always be one kid who would always like overdo everything? You know, they would really play dodgeball. You know, I mean, they, you know, they, I mean, they would, uh, and, and the adults would say, "Now, so-and-so, you don't know your own strengths." You know, and so sometimes I think that's what happens. We're trying to restrain ourselves from doing things that are wrong, but we don't know our own strength, and we end up hurting ourselves. So it's, it's, that's why we have to keep trying to work on getting to the middle, away from the extremes and toward the middle. I, this is why I love Buddhism, because it's like the middle path, you know? So I hope that.
Macathy?
Yes.
Lama, I have a question.
Yeah.
Is it always to do with other, is, is to do with ourself? Is it ever do, um, have to do with others? So that when you're driving all blame into one, my understanding is, is that, I mean, it's, at an intuitive level, it seems like you're, you're taking responsibility for whatever's wrong, rather than putting it on someone else. Is that?
No, it, yeah, again, it has to be the right size. It has to be the right size. Because, because, you know, when somebody, when somebody hurts us, when somebody hurts us, that is their fault, and they shouldn't do it. And so this is not telling us that we shouldn't say to somebody, "You have to stop hurting me now." I remember one Lama once, uh, answered this question this way. He said, "Just because you're trying to be compassionate, doesn't mean you have to be wrong-headed." That it is never wrong to tell someone to stop hurting you. So that's not what this is about. What this is about is that moment of angry reaction. Misfortune comes, and we don't want to take a single bit of responsibility. Oh, it's their fault. They did it. And so what they're saying is, because you human beings tend to blame everybody else, but never take responsibility yourself, first you have to correct that imbalance. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, good. And then, and then Chuck, thanks for your question. Sometimes folks are irrational and petty and filled with anger, and you can't get through. I had this conversation with somebody yesterday, and it really is, you know, the only thing I can tell you is that, um, is that people who are bullies and are angry and are like this, i- it's almost like they use anger like a drug. They almost use anger like it's some kind of like, puts them in an altered state. They're using it as some kind of drug to get high off of. And they, they, they're outraged all the time because it makes them feel strong. And, uh, and I think the only thing that I can do is say, "Yes, that person is irrational. Yes, that person's being petty. And if they cause me harm, I am going to say, you know, you gotta stop hurting me." Uh, so that, and you can't, but if you sit there and stew about them and think, "That person is so bad, that person is so bad, that person is so bad." And that, that's all you do, is just sit there and ruminate about how bad that person is. Or, "I'm too much of a victim. I'm terrible. I'm bad." You know, if we do that kind of stuff, you know what I mean? It's like we're hurting, we're hurting the situation if we just, we're hurting ourselves if we just sit and ruminate. And so what he's saying is, is that when you start to get in these spirals of rumination, that you have to actually unplug because it's not doing you any good. You're actually not solving the problem by thinking about how bad people are. Now, you can think, "You know what? I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna ride share with that person anymore." I mean, you know, you can, and, and you're, and like, "I'm not inviting that person to any of my parties. That's it. I'm done." But, um, but I think if we see, yeah, and somebody says here, yeah, there's, uh, I think that if we look at what those other people are doing, they're afraid. They're absolutely vulnerable and afraid, and they feel that the best defense is a good offense. You know, so I think that happens. And so we have to actually like pray for them. One of my buddies from, uh, the old days when I worked at the newspaper was telling me about his neighbor who has, um, who has, uh, a flag that uses an expletive on it. And it's flying underneath his American flag, and it, and it tells you what you should do with yourself. And, uh, and it makes him angry. It really makes him angry. And I say, "Well, you know," I said, "You, you like Dionne Warwick." And he's like, "Well, yeah." I said, "Well, every time you drive by, start singing. I'll say a little prayer for you," right? You know, bec- I mean, because there's nothing else you can do, right? The, the people are just gonna be like this. So just pray for them. What else can you do? Then there's, uh, there's another question in chat, and then I'll get you Charles, and then we'll, we'll move forward. Uh, "For me, fear is the harmful emotion." Yeah, how, how to get through fear? I think, thinking about the people who are around the world right now, feeling the same fear that you're feeling, and making, like, giving them this gigantic hug, you know? And this reassurance, this sense of reassurance, like, "We are going to get through this." You know, and, and the idea of, a friend of mine said, "I want to be like my own older brother." You know, "I don't have an older brother, but if I had one, he would be in my corner, and he would help me." And I'm thinking that when there is this situation of fear, what you can do at the beginning is you can ask yourself, "Am I safe right now? Am I safe right now?" And then you can pray to the Buddha to be present above your head. And to imagine that the Buddha is shining a light on you. And that, that, uh, it, Khenpo Rinpoche, when he taught me this, he said, "You see it as being like golden light." he said, you see it as being like golden light coming from the Buddha. The Buddha can either be in front of you or above your head. And that you think that that light covers you and it purifies you of all negativity and all difficulty. And the other thing you can do is, I had a Tibetan doctor teach me a quick meditation to do for fear. And he said, start by breathing in for a count of five. Breathe in. And then hold. Breathe out. And then breathe in that way to a count of five. Hold for a count of five and breathe out for a count of five. And he said, do that like three or five times. And that will bring your heart rate down. And then he recommended, instead of the Buddha, imagining that the Buddha is shining light on you, he said, you can imagine a gate in space in front of you. And that you send all of your fear through the gate. And you can do it with your breath. Imagine that your breath is pushing the fear out through the gate. But on the other side of the gate, it turns into golden light, the golden light of universal compassion. And then it fills the room you're in and touches you and protects you. And it fills your home, it fills the block, it fills the world. And he said, do this and sometimes it will help it to pass. And it says, is it incorrect to drive all blame into one, reminding yourself that you're being given an opportunity to burn off some karma? Yes, yeah, it depends on how strong you are internally. Because if people have already taken on too much blame in their life, they actually need to moderate that a bit. But if you, but one of the things you can do is that, that is one of the, Kemper Rinpoche said that there are five benefits to misfortune. I should type these down. Two of them have to do with karma. And one of them, two of them has to do with compassion. So you say karma, I'm burning it off. I think I may have told you this, about the Tibetan man who had the burned hands, who when I saw him, he said, that obstacle that was gonna hurt me in a future life, that obstacle is gone now. It's over now. And so the second way of thinking of karma is like karma, it's real. And I'm going to do only good karma from now on. So that's the second one. The third one has to do with compassion. You know, now I know what suffering is. Okay, so that you become more compassionate because you know what suffering is. And then the other way of working with compassion is to say, I can take on the suffering of others. And then the last one is humility. Because others, you have to accept help from others. So there are five benefits to misfortune, according to Khenpo Karthar Rinpoche. One is that you're burning off karma. The other is that you recognize karma is real and you'll try to abandon negative karma. Now your compassion will grow because you understand what suffering is. And then if you practice Tonglen, you can take on the suffering of others. And then you'll have a sense of humility because you will have to accept help from others. So that's, now, see, Charles, what's your question?
Well, I think you touched on it with the last answer. I guess I'm trying to ask, are you drawing a distinction when you say to take on a limited amount of pain or blame? At the same time, when I'm doing Tonglen and see it as dark smoke and bringing in the sufferings of the world, I'm not trying to cut any out or prevent other types of blame. Bring it all, bring it on.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, you have to know how strong you are.
Okay.
Because there are people, Kemper Rinpoche said, we don't, we do have compassion. We have a certain amount of naturally occurring love and a certain amount of naturally occurring compassion. But it's not enlightened love and enlightened compassion. We don't have wisdom. It's not completely imbued with wisdom. So what might happen to us is we might take on more than our share and it's gonna really beat us down. Now, there are other people who are incredibly strong. And those people can and should take on as much of the negativity of others as they can. But they're already strong, they can do this. Kemper Rinpoche said, you'll know when you've hit your limit, when you begin to resent the people you are trying to help. Let's say you're trying to help someone and they're only getting mad at you. You're trying to help someone and they double deal you, you know? And then you get really, really angry. And you, but you keep, but you think, oh, I'm gonna be a compassionate Bodhisattva. I'm gonna go to the very limits and I'm gonna give away all of my things and, you know, and so forth and so on. And Rinpoche said that you shouldn't do that. He said, there was, he used an example of a monk in his monastery who said, I'm going to be like a perfect Bodhisattva. I'm gonna give away everything I own. And he did, he actually gave away everything he owned in this flash of renunciation. And then later in the day, he had to kind of go back furtively to everybody and say, hey, can I have my shoes back? And it's like, it's dinner time, can I have my bowl back? You know, so he said, your compassion has to be imbued with wisdom. Does that make?
Sure, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we're all at a different place. And in fact, the same person might be in two different places. Like, we could take the blame for one kind of thing, but not another, you know? So we have to just keep working and just keep improving, you know? Never give up, never give up. That's the thing, no matter how many times you fall, never give up. And that's, I think, that's that famous thing that the Dalai Lama was saying. Just no matter what's happening, just never give up. So I'm gonna go back to presentation now, because let's see what time is it? Okay, I've got enough time to get through the majority of point three. So if we're not doing blame, that's the first of the, the second of the slogans. The third slogan is be grateful to everyone. And this is to help combat our tendency to be angry when misfortune comes. And so, and so this is why having, giving the list of the five joys of misfortune that I just gave, you know, Kemper Rinpoche's five joys of misfortune. You've learned about karma, you burned up karma, and you learned compassion and all of that, is a way of saying, well, you know, we need to have difficulty. And the very first thing that Jangkhan Khatral says under the slogan, be grateful to everyone, he's saying, look, you could say that people who cause us trouble are actually emanations of Buddhas and our teachers. Because, I mean, like, has anybody ever wanted to do this? You wanna go to your teacher and you wanna say, oh, teacher, please tell me what my faults are so I can correct my faults? I actually know people who went to Kemper Rinpoche and did this. They would go to Khenpo Karthar Rinpoche and say, oh, teacher, please tell, show me my faults. Show me clearly my faults so I can combat them. And Rinpoche used to say, you don't want me to do that. Yeah, yeah, you don't really want me to do that. And so, and so what, but what happens is, then, when somebody insults us in front of someone we're trying to impress, somebody insults us, then we don't feel the same way. We don't say, oh, you're just, you're doing what I asked my teacher to do. Thank you so much. We just don't do, I mean, right? I mean, right? So I think that, again, once again, he's encouraging us to try to moderate our tendency to react in anger when misfortune comes to call. And instead, maybe we could start thinking of these benefits that come from negativity. He says, don't be angry because, you know, these other beings are trying to help you learn the six perfect virtues. He says, strive to give whatever actual help you can. If you cannot help, then think and say, may this sentient being or troublemaker quickly be rid of pain and enjoy happiness. May he come to attain Buddhahood. And then say, from now on, all of the virtuous acts I do shall be for his welfare. Well, I know that's hard to do. And sometimes you do it through gritted teeth. May you be a Buddha. May you get enlightened really quickly. But you, you know, but at least you're doing it, right? And now, there are certain politicians, let's just say, there are certain politicians that make people mad. And somebody asked Khenpo Karthar Rinpoche about this. And they said, you know, Rinpoche, this politician gets on my last raw nerve and really makes me angry. And they're doing a lot of harm. Do I have to pray for them? And Rinpoche said, yes, you do. Because if you spend your time getting angry at them, that only makes you worse. It doesn't do a thing to them, but it makes you worse. And so somebody said, so how do we pray for such a person, Rinpoche? And Rinpoche gave a prayer. I may not be able to find it rapidly here. But he actually spoke this prayer and I will try to find a way to share it with everybody because it's just really great. It says, by the truth of the realization and wisdom of all the Buddhas and Bodhisattvas in countless realms throughout the ten directions, may this person gradually transcend their current limitations, meet spiritual friends, enter the Dharma path and gain liberation. So, you know, worldly people, when they're mad at somebody, they say, go to Hades. And we're Buddhists, we say, may you get enlightened. It's a little bit different, you know? So just, it's just something to think about. And then, and then it gives this really rather strong-worded piece of advice. He says, if you're troubled by gods or demons, which, you know, in the 12th century, it was quite a thing. People would be troubled by gods and demons, you know, then, you know, who are making trouble for them. They would ask, they would say, well, just imagine that the demon is right there in front of you and imagine that you give him everything you have and own. Well, this is a little bit tough. So Khenpo Karthar Rinpoche made a simpler version of this. And if you go to www.lamacathy.net, if you go there and you look for Tonglen for difficult situations, in that, in that little article, Rinpoche said, look, if somebody's causing you trouble, imagine they're in front of you. And then imagine that between you and above you is the Buddha. And then you pray to the Buddha. He said, don't pray to the Buddha to protect you from that bad person. Pray for the Buddha to protect both of you. Both of you. And then make a mental gift in your mind of everything you have, everything you own, all of your merit, all of your goodness. And then mentally send it to that negative person. Mentally send that to them as a gift. And so that is essentially what you do. And then you dedicate the merit of that to the Buddhas and Bodhisattvas. So in any case, that is a way to do Tonglen in a situation where there's a harm from another person. So I thought I would share that one with you as a way of working with that. Then, that all has to do with relative bodhicitta, love and compassion. So instead of blaming, you drive all blame into one meaning, do your best to restrain yourself from blame and say, you know, I've done a lot of bad karma, it's coming to fruition. I get this. But, you know, again, you don't take too much of your responsibility, but you have to take some. And then, and then do your best to feel grateful to others who are part of your life. And be grateful to the circumstances that you're finding yourself in. Then, under ultimate bodhicitta, the slogan is, the ultimate protection is emptiness. Know that what arises as confusion to be the four aspects of being. Now, those of you who remember last week's class, we talked about the enlightened mind of the Buddha, the Dharmakaya, that through compassion manifests as the two kaya's of form, the Nirmanakaya for ordinary beings and the Sambhogakaya for enlightened beings. And so basically what is being said in this, the operative phrase in this next paragraph, he says, in general, all appearances and especially particularly adverse conditions are like the distressed experience when you dream of being burnt in a fire or swept away by a flood. The confused appearances of mind are invested with the reality they do not have. Then he says, it is rigorously established that although these appearances arise, there's not a particle of true reality to them. So the appearances you experience in your mind are not material things. But then he says, at the top of page 22, he says, when you rest in a state in which appearances simply arise, but there is no clinging to them. So this is the operative phrase. When you rest in a state in which appearances simply arise, but you don't cling to them. The Dharmakaya aspect is that they're empty in nature. The Nirmanakaya is that they appear with clarity. The Sambhogakaya is that aspect is that this emptiness and clarity occur together. And the Sambhogakaya aspect is that they're inseparable. This key instruction to rest evenly without grasping at origin, location, and sensation points out the four kaya's. It is the armor of you, the protection circle of emptiness, and the supreme instruction that cuts off all confusion. Now, this is incredibly difficult to grasp. But the easiest way for me to describe it is that is those operative phrases. When you rest in a meditative state, where you see the things that are arising in your mind, but you don't cling to them and you don't have fear of them, they appear but are not solid and so forth. And what he's saying here, he says that if you can rest in meditation like that, if you can rest in meditation like that, then even adverse conditions can be triggers to wake you up. And I think that most of us have to admit that we are not meditators at that level, where we can rest evenly in a state where appearances arise and we don't cling to them. But even if all we do is read this particular slogan and this particular explanation and make an aspiration, in the future, may I be able to practice ultimate bodhicitta to the place where I can recognize that what is appearing in my mind is only appearing in my mind. And I can see the basic empty nature of all phenomena. That's way in the future for most of us. But right now, what we could always do is say, may I understand this in the future? And may I be able to practice meditation like this in the future? Does anybody have any questions they want to address about this slogan? It is not the easiest thing to understand, but I tried to give a theoretical explanation. Do you have any thoughts or questions about this one?
Lama Cathy?
Yes.
I just didn't get to my unmute button in time. A term I've heard thrown around over the years has been, if I can remember right now, spiritual bypassing. And is there a danger here to misapply this somehow?
Oh, yeah, of course, that's always a problem. I mean, it's like that poor monk who gave away all his worldly belongings, thinking that it was gonna solve all his problems. And it just actually created more problems. He was using some idea of an exalted spiritual state that he was in. And he thought, well, in my exalted spiritual state, I can give away all my possessions. And that somehow that would And, and it, and that somehow that would make my life all better, but it didn't. And in fact, it made it worse because now he didn't have a spoon. He didn't have a bowl. He didn't have shoes. You know, so, um, all the, there's always a danger that people can misuse the teachings. It's always a danger. And I, and that's why I think, that's why I wanted to point out that the operative phrases there were when you rest in a state in which appearances merely arise. You, they, they actually point out their own nature to you. But, uh, but you also see this kind of instruction in Mahamudra texts. So I, what I always tell people is, um, you know, this is not something we can do right now, but it's something we can make the aspiration to do in the future. So that's how I had, that's how I like to encourage people to look at this slogan rather than kind of toss your hands in the air and say, I don't understand it. I don't get it. Just say, well, may in the future it be relevant to me and may I be able to practice like this in the future. Does that help?
Yeah, I think so. And also the, the other side of that is to become dismissive of real suffering because like, well, it's all just illusion. And, you know, I'm in this exalted state and so therefore I'm not touched by all of this. Because, you know, I, I think, I think I read somebody call that being like drunk on emptiness or something like that.
Yeah. Yeah, there, there are many cases that, uh, Kempo Carthak Rinpoche spoke of where people got that idea and then committed terrible misdeeds. And so, uh, this is why I don't go and, I don't deeply, uh, teach, uh, people how to meditate on emptiness. Because I think there's a huge, um, there's just a huge danger of misunderstanding like that. And Kempo Rinpoche was asked about karma once and, you know, if, if, uh, at the ultimate level, uh, you know, um, you know, karma doesn't exist. He says, oh, you should never do that. He said, never do that. He said, even Milarepa said, I who have the most exalted view, I am telling you, obey the laws of karma. You know, they're real and you're, and you're, you're living under relative truth. So until you are no longer living under relative truth, then you can talk about it, but not.
Until we're flying through the skies.
Yes, I think that's probably, that's probably the time you can talk about that. Well, that's, that, sadly, that's the only question I'm going to entertain on this because I see from the time, I want to make sure I cover the, uh, the last slogan in this section, uh, which is, um, the best way is to use the, uh, four practices. Uh, in, in, in any case, we may or may not have compassion that is so great that we can drive all blame into one and we can be grateful to everyone. I mean, we may not have compassion that that's, that's, that is that great. And we may not have wisdom that is that deep to see all misfortune as the four bodies of the Buddha. So if we're, if, if we're having some trouble trying to practice these, he said, there are four things you can do that will definitely help you and work with misfortune. And, uh, he said, these are um, accumulating merit, confessing your evil actions, giving torma to gods and demons, and offering torma to dekines and protectors. These are the best of all methods for using adverse conditions as the path. Now, the first thing is, remember the five joys of, of misfortune? The first one is, I understand karma now. I'm not going to do any more bad karma. Okay, so that's it. And then the second is, okay, this misfortune is purifying my bad karma. So those are two things we can think about. So if we accumulate merit, that a lot of people think, they misunderstand merit. They think it's like money in the bank or something. It's not like that. When we do virtuous things, remember those 10 virtuous actions? Saving lives, being truthful, you know, being kind, being gentle. All of those 10 virtuous actions, when we do those, it actually has an impact on our mind. Our mind stream is actually, um, you could say conditioned. It becomes conditioned with, um, with virtue. We're actually using virtue to condition our minds. And when our minds, uh, are conditioned with virtue, then we are able to, uh, accept things and are able to work with things better and better and better. We, we have more presence of mind. We have more gentility and so on. So the first thing that we should try to do is, is remember to be virtuous and to recite mantras, uh, to make offerings, uh, and to, and to pray. I love it. He even says, pray to be free from hope and fear. Pray whatever is best for me. That's what I want. If, you know, if it's better for me to have this, I want this. If it's better for me to not have this, I don't want this. It's basically praying for what is best. And this kind of prayer, uh, roots out expectation and anxiety. Because I know so many people who pray thinking that something is going to come to them because they pray. And then when they don't receive the thing that they've prayed for, then they get angry. They, they're really just very, very angry. And so, uh, and so that's really not about learning how to accept and be with your life. So I, anyway, in any case, it's just something to, um, to consider. So accumulating merit is first. Second, um, uh, confessing evil actions. Now, uh, those of you who have read Trungpa Rinpoche, uh, Trungpa Rinpoche on his website, uh, www.rinpoche.com. Uh, I think I spelled that right. Yeah. He has a, uh, a, a small article called the 12 links of interdependence. Uh, if you read that, in the 12 links of interdependence, he says, there's four parts to any action that we do. There's the idea, getting the idea that you want to do an action. They're starting to do the action. There is finishing the action. And then there is the feeling of satisfaction at having finished the action. The example I frequently use is, um, is wadding up a newspaper and hitting a fly. Okay, so you have the, you have the thought, I don't like flies. I will kill fly. So there's the intention. There is, there's the getting of the weapon and the raising of the weapon. And then maybe you stop. Maybe you just stop with the idea and you never do it. Or you start and then you say, nah, he's got somebody waiting for him at home. You know, and then you don't do it, right? And, but then some people, you know, then there's the carrying out of the action. And then they just feel terrible because they killed this poor fly. But then the last part of it is satisfaction saying, ha, ha, I got him. So, uh, these are the four parts of an action. The idea, the beginning, the action, the completing of the action and the, uh, and the satisfaction. Each one of these presses more deeply into our stream of being, the habit of doing that thing. Kempo Rinpoche calls it a momentum of action. Karma isn't, you know, and it conditions our minds when we do negative things. So what, what, uh, Jamgon Kontrul and Chakawishe Dorje are asking us to do here is to do more virtuous things and then to confess and make amends for our negative things. He says, just as there are four parts to an action, there's four parts to a confession. Now, I never heard this, these two taught together. So maybe I'm putting one and one together and getting the wrong number. But it is interesting that there are four parts to a confession. And it is said that when one makes a confession in this way, the negative karma of that is removed. It's gone. Because Kempo Rinpoche, Kempo Carthak Rinpoche used to say, there's only one good thing about bad karma. And that is that it is relative truth. And because it's relative truth and it's compounded, it can be purified. That may be news to you, but karma can be purified. No matter what it is or how much of it there is, you can purify it. And so the four parts of a confession are to rely on the Buddha as the, um, as the witness for your confession, thinking that you're in front of the Buddha. You re, you recall and regret the wrongs you've done. You resolve not to repeat them. And you dedicate the remedy to, uh, the purification of your karma. So there you have it. Uh, it's, it really is interesting to me that, that you can purify your karma. And so by being able to purify this, this means we take the proper amount of responsibility. Remember we were talking about our responsibility being the right size? Through confession, we take the right amount of responsibility. And then we make the aspiration to not repeat these actions in the future. So confession is, uh, is a wonderful practice. So there, there's, uh, those are two of the four things. The other two have to do with making offerings. Now, uh, Kempo Carthak Rinpoche said that in this world, there are lots of forces. There are enlightened forces. And they act as protectors to us. And, uh, and then there are mundane forces, uh, which he calls like the local spirits and gods and powerful human beings and so forth and so on. And he said, so what this basically means, he said, yes, if you know how to make Tibetan shrine offering tormas out of, uh, out of, of barley flour, you know, roasted barley flour and butter and make these little, small, um, um, they're little sculptures. And then you offer those every day. Of course, people can do that. He said, but that's really hard. So when he was, when Kempo Carthak Rinpoche was teaching this book a few years ago, he said, you know what's really easy? He said, burn a stick of incense and put it outside your house. And imagine that that stick of incense, the smoke coming from that stick of incense goes and it makes offerings to all the worldly powers, giving them everything they need. And then goes and makes offerings to all of the enlightened ones and asks for their protection. So he said, in this way, you can make offerings to the, the, the Buddhists and Bodhisattvas and all the protectors who can help you in your practice. And you can make friends with all the locals who, uh, have an impact on the way you're, what your environment is like, what your relative environment is like. And, uh, so you can read more about this in Ken MacLeod's brilliant, um, footnotes for this section. But in, uh, to, to keep, to talk about this in short, because I'm going to run over about five minutes here. But, um, but to keep this short, this last section tells us four things that we can do to work with misfortune. Four things we can actually do. Maybe we can't perfectly practice emptiness meditation. Maybe, maybe we can't perfectly practice love and compassion. But these are four things we can all do, which is do lots of virtue, refrain from doing wrong and confess what wrong you've done to purify it. And then make offerings to all the beings of the world. Through this one little incense offering, that he said, Kempo Rinpoche said, in Tibet, the grandparents where they lived in multi, multi-generational homes, everyone lived in a multi-generational home. He said, it was the grandparents' job every day to make this little incense fire. And to make these offerings to, uh, all the enlightened ones as well as all the mundane ones, making the aspiration that all beings have happiness and goodness and that the environment is, is pure and clean and, uh, and peaceful. So, um, in any case, um, that's just a little about that. So I do have quite, I do have time for questions. Does anybody have questions? Okay. No questions? All right. That's, that, oh yes, hi.
Hi, um, the four parts of a confession.
Yeah.
What was the fourth part?
Yeah, okay. Uh, I use the letter R to help me remember. There's reliance. That's reliance on the Buddha, you know, as the, as the witness. And then, uh, regret. And then after that, uh, is, uh, resolution. And then remedy. So it's like you, you like dedicate the practice of confession to the purification of your karma. You see what I'm saying? There, there are some, like the confession itself, like, um, well, there's actually a confession in the book, which is why, um, which is why, uh, they give, they put these, uh, seven branch offering at the end. I think it's on page 105 of this book, page 105. There's, um, what's really cool about like a, a full Buddhist, um, recollection of one's day is that you don't just remember the bad stuff you did. You also remember the good stuff you did. So in, uh, so in this, it says, with complete faith, I bow to the victorious ones and their children who abide in the ten directions. I make offerings and so forth. The next set of verses, I confess all evil actions I have done. And then I rejoice in the virtue of, of myself and everyone. And then, uh, I pray for the wheel of Dharma to be turned and so on. So this is like, uh, like a, um, a capsule, um, confession practice that you can do. Does that help? Okay. Yeah, give the kitties a hug for me, Maureen. Yeah. Yeah, okay. It's, that's good. And any other questions that people might have?
Lama Kathy?
Yes.
Um, yes, uh, hello, thank you. I'd just like to ask a quick question. I can't pull, um, the prayer really quickly, but I was wondering, is the prayer um, of Dorje to George Chong, the confession prayer that's sometimes recited in the nunne?
Um, Oh, yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's a good one.
Okay, so that has all four components of the Rs?
I think so. I think so.
Okay, I have to look at the English.
Yeah, uh, Lama Dorje Zimpa, Kempo, yeah, I, yeah, uh, yeah, that's, that's, in fact, there are, um, Kempo Rinpoche says that, uh, in the Sutra tradition, there are two common, I mean, uh, in the, I'm sorry, in the Sutra tradition, we do the prayer of confession before the 35 Buddhas, the three heaps. And then, uh, and I can't remember if Lama Dorje Zimpa was, was from the Sutra tradition or not, so I better not say. But he, he did mention it as a prayer that you could do as a confession on, on a daily basis.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, but it is, it's in the nunne, yeah. Yeah, that's good. Other questions? Okay, well, then, um, one thing I wanted to, uh, make a note of here is the, um, is the, the last slogan in, in part three is work with whatever you encounter immediately. Now, again, he says, when illness, demons, interruptions, or disturbing emotions come unexpectedly, or if you see someone else troubled by some unpleasant situation, think, I shall do, just practice sending and taking. So like he's just saying, you know, because this might actually, uh, Chujah, uh, when you were talking about, you know, how to, uh, how to key into doing something, how to remember to do something. He's just basically saying, the only thing we need to kind of remember is sending and taking. So even if you can just get like that far, like, how can I use sending and taking in this situation? You know, I mean, even if we can't figure out how to do it, that's another key to key into it. So he's saying, when they happen unexpectedly, just rely on sending and taking. And he says, in all of your virtuous thoughts and actions, think, may all sentient beings come to engage naturally in much greater Dharma activity than this. So even when you're doing good things and you might want to like pat yourself on the back for all the good stuff you've been doing, he says, imagine and make the aspiration that so many, that even greater things happen. And then he says, do the same when you're happy or comfortable. Because when you're happy, you can just imagine, remember the verse we talked about last week? When I am happy, may my virtue flow to others, may its blessings fill the sky. When I am unhappy, may the suffering of all beings be mine, may the ocean of sorrow run dry, or however. I had that, I have suffering and sorrow backwards. But those verses, he says, if you can think of those kinds of things. And then he says at the back, he says, in summary, maintain the motivation to help others, whatever you are doing, eating, sleeping, walking, sitting. As soon as you encounter a situation, good or bad, work at this practice of mind training. So, um, so he's just basically saying, um, when you have the opportunity, when you have the opportunity, uh, to, to practice, when misfortune comes, try always to, you know, to, to, to use it as fast as you can. Uh, because otherwise we're going to be back stuck in, you know, in our patterns of reaction. Now, we don't want to become too like obsessive or compulsive about this. That's not what they're trying to get us to do. They're trying to help us overcome our tendency to be self-centered by trying to think, well, how can I help others in this situation? And what I do is sometimes when I'm in, I'm in a situation where I can't help somebody, I'll just sit there and say, I wish I could help you. I mean, I just think it really hard, you know? Because no matter, I mean, I'll say, like, when I wake up in the morning, this is getting into next week's topic, but when I wake up in the morning, I'll say, may everything I do. "May everything I do today benefit beings in some way and may all beings, you know, come to Buddhahood," you know? So I try to do that kind of thing. So hopefully, this is helpful. And I can't tell you how glad I am to see all of you. I'm going to page through and like, "Hi, everybody, you are amazing." And I hope that these, these hints and tips are useful to you. And it's my prayer that, that this practice helps you a lot in your life. And if you want to, if you have questions that develop for you in between, you can write me, lama kathy@columbusktc.org, I think that's right. You can write to me there. And, and then if, if you want to, if, if you don't hear from me in two days, write again, that means it's fallen at the bottom. And Chuja is, yay, I'm glad you guys like it. Yeah, and then if you, if you want to sign up for next week's class, you can do that online. I'm going to try to keep moving forward all of the names. I have to type them in by hand unless you sign up. So, so I've got, I've gotten good at it, but anyway, just can't thank you enough. Thank you for being here. I dedicate all your merit. Oh, Pato and Aida, hello, and your, your darling puppy. This is so great.
Our doggies are following the teachings.
Doggies are following the teachings, all right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah. So let me dedicate some merit. We'll dedicate the merit of this session to all sentient beings, especially those who are struggling right now. May what we're doing tonight help them in some way. Through this merit, may all achieve the omniscience of Buddhahood. May it defeat our common enemy, wrongdoing. From the stormy waves of birth, old age, sickness, and death. From the ocean of samsara, may we free all beings, may we free all beings, may we free all beings. Okay, it's wonderful to see you all. I just thought, it's like, "Hi, guys." I know, it's like, "Hi, California, I see you." Yeah, okay, everybody, take really good care and we'll see you next time.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, see you.
Thank you.
Yay, thank you, guys. Yay. Therona, give the doggy a hug for me.
Lama Kathy?
Yes.
My daughter, Xanthi, is living now about 100 meters away from Rigpa Dorje in Treal.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
I know, I went to visit her and, and we just, she said, "Oh, and there's this Buddhist place near my house."
Oh, that's wonderful. I've been in that center, that's, yeah.
Amazing, she's about 100 meters away on the same street.
Well, I hope, well, I hope that when all of this COVID nonsense, you know, kind of if we can ever get it to settle down, that people can get together to meditate on something other than Zoom, you know?
Yeah, 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 I hope so too. Thank you, good night.
Yeah, okay, guys, it's really, really good to see you. Take good care of yourselves. Okay.
You too, Lama Kathy.
I know, I, I'm, I'm trying my best, I'm trying my best. Okay, guys, so anyhow, Chuja, thank you for being the host with the most. And I'm going to go ahead and stop the recording now, so bye. Okay, recording is over, I think. Oh, I have to request that from the meeting host to stop the, the, the recording. So you have to stop the recording. And then we'll put this online. Did we get lucky? Oh, got it, thank you. Okay, very good. All right, Oma Nee Pay Me Hong, okay. Okay, it says, okay, here it goes.